Welcome to the Village Board meeting of Monday, March 20th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM and we will start off with roll off. Trustee Booker.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Owens.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Yeah.
Trustee Thompson.
Yeah.
And we invite the audience to join us as we decide whether we can. Let me lead to the prayer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In fact, if you mind, if anyone that desires to be viewed, if you're not on our agenda, you can find the yellow pad there with your name and address. I don't know, I'm sure if anyone's on this.
There you go, we'll keep going with this.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the elected official tax reports. And we have a number of reports in our package. Are there any questions on any reports that we have? Trustee Owens.
Just had one question to tie it in regards to the annual employee training. Can you just use a little bit more? Sure, this would be a new initiative. No, I don't exactly know what's been happening in the past, but I'm working with GOSHA to do an annual employee training. I'd be talking to the board at contributing as far as the possibility of closing the public facilities for an afternoon. So we would have all the public employees in a spot at the same time to do a training. It'd be an update on what's going on in the village. Each time there'd be a different HR topic, so we're talking about anti-arrestment, but there are different things. And then there would be a bunch of potential public safety type items like CPR training, talking about emergency management, like if there was a tornado or a fire, where to go to the different buildings, things like that. So it's something that she's kind of working out a template on and will be taken to the department heads and it would be sometime in the summer.
Any other questions?
Just a general comment that I just wanted to emphasize. This goes to the board and the community really, really need some help recruiting people for volunteer committees. So anyone in attendance, you know, if we have a goal of trying to find one or two people that you know that would be good for a volunteer committee, please encourage them to apply. If they can do that before the election, that would be greatly appreciated. And then the community survey is live as well. So we want to encourage anyone, whether you're a resident or a business owner, any connection to Brown Deer, we encourage them to take the community survey.
All right, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, we will move on to our consent agenda. And under our consent agenda, we add the consideration of the minutes of the March 6th, 2023 meeting to accept the February 2023 vouchers and the consider approval of the block group in corporate agreement, and that's the block handlers. Any questions about those three items? If not, can we get an approval of the consent agenda? An approval of the consent agenda. It's been moved by Trustee Booker and second by Trustee Thompson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Have the curious demand, the most curious demand. New business. We have, under new business donation of a fire suppression tool, the worshipful master James M. Hayes Lodge of free and accepted Masons. And I believe the chief will be speaking to this.
I'll introduce and then you guys can present and tell them what you saw and apply it.
I go?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Hadar, and the worshipful master of James M. Hayes Lodge and free and accepted Masons. And speaking of background of who we are, we're aligned here. Our lodge had a long history of being in the Brown Deer, Wendell area. We were right across from Brown Deer Park on the Levee Road a long time. And the reason I'm here is for the donation of the fire suppression tool. Now, the reason we have this is the grand lodge in Wisconsin through the charitable arm of the Wisconsin Islamic Foundation. They embark every couple of years on a new mission, a new way to give back to the community, which we're a part of. And in the past, it's been the AEDs or the FBRLers, which we've supplied to schools. And not only here, but throughout the state, they give them to our subordinate lodges such as us. And now they've embarked on giving out these vice car fire suppression tools. And we decided to come to Brown Deer for this because of our long history here. Brother Steve's lived here 40 years. I lived in Brown Deer for 32. Jim Winston lives about 30, about 30 years. And someone who's not here, whether with Jim McWhiggin, who's quite care of town, he's over there, has a longstanding about 30-year history too and has a business right down the road. So we reached out to Brown Deer, which he said we'd gladly accept this. And what this fire suppression tool is, imagine. It's what's kind of nicknamed as being like a fire extinguisher grenade. And what this does, matter of when to pins. If you come upon a fire, that's usually something that's contained like in a house, a garage or a apartment. You pull the two pins, there's a six-second delay, you toss it into where the fire is. And what it does is it emits cloud air assault, similar to like a dry chemical extinguisher. It's what it does, it drowns up the flame, pretty much sucks the heat out of it to reduce the temperature of the flames so that it can't combust anymore of the materials in there. And the beauty of this device, it's non-oxygenated plate. So it's not like a CO2 extinguisher. So if somebody's in that room, they will suffocate from this, not the smoke or whatever, you know, is in the room already, it will take care of that. But because this takes the heat out of the flame, it's not like it turns the room into a blast cooler either. It just deals with the flames. So a device like this, it emits this clouded air assault, totally melts the room for about 60 seconds. And it'll either put out the fire depending on how big it is, or it'll suppress it to the point where it buys time until a fire department shows up. And the reason we're going to give these to police is because they're usually the first ones on the scene until five-minute delay or so, until the fire department gets there, pulls his hoses out and assesses. So as an officer arrives on the scene, he can pull this out of his trunk right away, go into where the fire is, assess it, thinks it needs it, just pull it, throw it in. You don't have to even be where the flame is, like you would with a fire extinguisher. So we decided to get this, let me start with our one. I'm not sure how many more we're going to get or purchase of here, but it's our goal to get one in every squad that's out of control, like we said, four or five at a time. So we'd like to do that over the next year or two, since I start. I think I've explained it well, you understand how it works. So on behalf of James M. Hayes Lodge, Wisconsin Islamic Foundation. Yeah, we love portals.
And then you can share.
I'm going to take one, two. Yeah, one more. Thank you. That's great, thank you. And just to let you know, these are about $1,000 a piece. So. No, it's a one-time deal. But what happens is the manufacturer says that normally these would be covered under whatever insurance as a replacement. So you just contact the company, they assist with the insurance company, and then they usually replace them. And these have a 15-year shelf life. So once he's getting all the squads, by that time, there might be something better or newer out there. But I think you're going to start seeing more commonplace, you're going to see them public buildings, probably schools at some point. The same way, when we started doing AEDs, it wasn't a common item. These schools, public places, you had to pioneer to get them out there to people to know who they are. And I think this probably will have reasons that these things too, they're really ingenious devices. Is it 10-year science highlight meeting? You go online, you search for fire suppression tool, you'll actually see what these things can do when they have videos on their amazing places.
Hello. Probably, I don't think I have enough time.
All this, I think, thank you very, thank you very much. And as I have gone pop, this has become a very popular item that is on display for law enforcement because it can be used, you know, Ford and Fire Department gets there. So I appreciate that. Hopefully we don't need it, but as we can, as we can save something or a person from it, that'd be great. So appreciate you for doing that for us. Thank you.
So much for time and presenting on some. Sure. Everybody, you too. The next item on our agenda, we have a presentation from, it's the presentation on the state budget update from Representative Andrea from the 23rd District.
Hi, I'm State Representative Doug Drucker. For those of you who haven't met yet, it's a real pleasure to be here. I was first elected in 2020 and I did not represent Brown Deer. I was re-elected in 2022 and now I do. So my job just keeps getting better and better at each time. So hopefully many of you have received this postcard in the mail. I did send this out to all of our member constituents. So myself, Lengyng Stapp, Sandy Saltine, and Olivia, it's a Swiss food court center at our office halftime. We're here for your constituents. And if you need anything from state government assistance on agencies, licensing, all of those things, please don't hesitate, they're reach out to us because it's an honor to serve everybody here. And we're doing the best we can for our constituents. I was noticing on the agenda today that right after me, there is a resolution urging the legislature at government to fix broken system of funding critical local services. So why don't we jump into that, talk a little bit about what is being proposed right now? I recently gave two budget presentations, one in Milwaukee County and one in Wisconsin County. And the slides from that, I'm just going to go over a little bit from there. But all of the slides are also available on my website at gretlen drucker dot com. So as far as the budget goes, you probably heard a lot about the $7 million surplus. Yes, that's a thing. You would have told me when I was running in 2020, right after the world shutdown, that we would be fixing the largest ass surplus in Wisconsin state history. I would have thought you were crazy. But there are lots of reasons for that. We all stayed home, we bought a lot of things, and the things that we bought had state taxes. We didn't, we started to be a fiscal year with more money than I had anticipated. So a lot of what happens at the state level is a little factor in gas surplus and how it gets spent. One thing to remember is that is one-time money. So if we're spending it on programs that are going on for many years, that's probably not the best use of the one-time bucks. So we'll be taking a look at that and if there are things that you would like to see in that budget now, it's definitely the time to reject your state elections. There is a little timeline in here, it's the Wisconsin budget process. So the governor announced his budget plan on February 15th. That has now been presented to the Joint Committee on Finance. The Joint Committee on Finance is going to be doing a suite of public hearings. And I urge you now, it is the time, if there is any project, whether it's for this municipality or an interest of yours in particular, this is the time that we need to be hearing from you so that we know what we need to prioritize, what you want to stay in the budget. Last time, my first budget cycle, the governor announced his budget and then the whole thing was thrown out the window and then they built it. We don't know if that will happen again. Sometimes we hear that will happen, sometimes we hear that it won't. Regardless of whose budget or what happens, when there's this, this point in the year is the time to make sure that you are heard. And in fact, we don't have a state senator right now. We're looking at the person that you should probably be talking to, as well as people on the Joint Committee on Finance. The Joint Committee on Finance is going to be having a series of budget hearings. Those budget hearings have been announced. They will be in Waukesha, Oak Claire, Wisconsin Mills, and the Nakaw. They're not here in the local area on their own. Yeah, so that's where they will be. But there are plenty of other listening sessions that you can attend, either through my office or elsewhere. I also have full inclusion here, and I do put out in our, most of our publications that are in this letter, ways that you can get in touch with the Joint Committee on Finance. You can submit written testimony, you can go there in person. But again, it's just a great way for you to make your priorities known. In terms of fixing the state government and how we are going to be doing some increases in shared revenue, the governor's proposal right now does have a stark increase in shared revenue for municipalities. And I don't need to tell all of you how broken that formula has been for just about a decade. The proposal on the table right now is that the governor's budget would provide 20% of state sales tax collection to municipalities and counties in the form of shared revenue. The new system would be implemented in 2025, but it would have a 576.2 million over the base budget. So there's a significant increase, a lot goes into it. This is the first time that I have heard, and most of my families have heard, that there is a serious effort being made to try to fix that formula. Because it's not just Brown Deer, it's not just Milwaukee County, but counties all across the state are funded. I have fiscal clips coming. The other half of my district, I represent Weycham Bay, Fox Point, River Hills, Brown Deer, Bayside, but also my farm, Deesville, in Ozon County. Right now, their EMS service is being paid for with loved over our bonds. So this is affecting every single county and every single municipality all across the state. I am optimistic that something will happen, but that thing is still, we're not quite sure where that's going to come out. But we do recognize how urgently that formula needs to be fixed and how I'll do everything I can to advocate to make sure that municipalities get what they need to keep the critical services running and the roads repaired and the ambulance is running. So I've talked quite a bit, is there any questions or comments that I can answer?
So, Jeff, I have a question. Letter to Reverend Sharon. You said, based on the formula that would be implemented in 2025. What's going to happen immediately? Is there anything on the table that would happen immediately?
They would, I'm not even sure, but I'm not sure when the implementation would be. The current system right now, they're saying would go into effect till 2025, but it's a biennial budget, so I'm not exactly sure when you would probably see that running there. It had to collect it first through the, you know, through tax collection, so. But that probably isn't a delay.
With the hearings, the budget hearings around the state, are those going to be online and you can watch them?
I believe they'll be on Wisconsin Act.
Right. And can you submit, if somebody wants to make questions, will they submit them to you, you at the Joint Finance?
You can either write my office and we will be sure to pass your letters along and communicate that through the Joint Finance Committee. You can also submit testimony to the Joint Finance Committee directly at the website. So if you don't subscribe, I urge you to subscribe to my legislative newsletter. We publish it out every two weeks. We summarize what we think is most of interest to folks in the 23rd District. We do, we have links to the Joint Finance Committee, will be publicized on when those hearings are held and let you know the best way that you can contact some of the folks at Joint Finance. Well, the other thing that I didn't mention too is the Milwaukee County Sales Tax Proposal. So there is a proposal to allow Milwaukee County to levy a 1% sales tax in addition to the 5% that the county can currently do. We all know what diocese, county, and the city are in. I've been very encouraged, what I've heard so far about, at least with the talks with Republican leadership on allowing that to go forward. There are talks about cutting some of that yearmark for public safety, but I am optimistic that something like that will, will pass in the budget. I think the governor's going to be in the details. In terms of the 20% of the state sales tax revenue, 20% of the, of the, sorry, the state sales tax revenue of 20% of it is probably going to be yearmarks for law enforcement, fire, EMS, and car systems. So some of what is collected will have some strings attached, but I don't think we'll conduct too many strings where they're going. Yes?
So what percentage is being given out? You mentioned a 20%. So currently, what percentage will be discounted or is there?
I'm not sure. I don't think it's a flat rate. It depends on the municipality, the population, so a lot goes into it. So how much each municipality gets back from state is, like, maybe very likely, depending on if you're a city, if you're a building.
If I may clarify, I think the secret, shared revenue has never been tied to sales tax. I think this is the governor's first attempt to make a sustainable increase of, of a program that increases over time, assuming sales tax revenue increases over time. I think a lot of people that have looked at shared revenue over time have seen that dip because there's no tie to, sorry, a revenue source. It's just a number that's given based on a formula that's out there. So by having it with sales tax, it gives us an opportunity to increase over time, assuming that revenue increases over time. Is that correct?
Correct. So it would be tied to revenue and also tied to inflation as well. So there'd be some mechanisms. So as sales tax revenues go up, municipalities can share in that, and then revenue goes down, then presumably go down as well. But Tyler's correct, right now, it's just anger with the formula that was, I think, it's at least 10, 15 years old and hasn't changed. So this would at least give more sustainable funding tied to the revenues of the state.
Trustee Johnson.
You have another request, a question related to the mortgage rumors that made into the state. I know there's going to add top, do you have updates on that? Can you share with us?
Not that, I was getting my news from the Journal Sentinel and what you're reading as well. I know the governor has put forward a proposal in a year where they set a $7 million surplus. I believe he thought it was a good time to make that kind of one-time investment. I know Republican leadership has said that they're not interested, but I don't think that they are necessarily not interested in investing in the Brewers. They were not interested in the governor's proposal. So I have conflicting reports.
Other questions? China.
If I may, sure. There's one item, if you could look into for us. It comes with workers' compensation rates. So based on your field of work, we are given a different workers' comp rate and accounts from the state. We are the fiscal agent for the North Shore Health Department. And for whatever reason, the North Shore Health Department is given a higher at-risk rate than our police officers because they are tied to health. Anyone that knows our public health individuals, they are primarily in the office. And so for them to be at a higher at-risk rate than our police officers is, should not be correct. And so what we, talking to Sidnik, our liability insurer, had mentioned that there would have to be some kind of legislation to change that or give more specifics to maybe draw the health profession a little bit more. And so that would be something that we would be interested in some help as far as reviewing and seeing if there could be some clarification on that.
I'd be happy to follow you.
I can give you offline some more information.
Okay, definitely, great. All right, well, there's no other questions. Again, please feel free to reach out to my office. We're here to serve. Do get involved in the budget process, with letters, or if there's certain specifics, we're delighted to be your advocate, and I really appreciate this opportunity to be here. Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming. Next item on our agenda, consider resolution 2302, urging legislature, urging the legislature and government to fix broken system of funding critical local services.
We've talked about one or two meetings. Just wanted to get a resolution out there. This is a language actually mostly comes from a legal sense municipalities that they're encouraging municipalities to adopt and send to their legislators as a act of uniformity and support for fixing the shared revenue program.
And this resolution is in our package. Are you reading questions?
Is this something that is each individual, it is perhaps, or you guys want to say this? I think it's the individual.
Yeah, I mean, some municipalities are deciding that too, but I've talked with a good chunk of the managers in Milwaukee County. I would say, you know, at least half, two-thirds, somewhat, they'll be doing some kind of resolution. And I think the managers will individually be sending their signed resolution then to, not only the legislators, but you know, any of the joint finance committees or governor's office, anyone that would have the interest in knowing our position.
No, we're fine. I was just thinking that you guys could combine, spin it one person, you know, my bits trickling in if it's done individually.
I'd be happy to reach out to my, I think the ICC would be a perfect group.
Yeah, they would be, if you have, if you have something that don't agree, that you don't have one access to. But they was, they make sure to do it. Our next, there's no time to have our, except the joint finances get ready to start, so we don't meet in until April.
We could discuss it April, potentially. But I'll still submit it, but I think, you know, I'm having it all at once, you know, I don't see that as a bad effort either.
Right. Any other questions? Johnny, do I need to read the whole resolution?
No.
So if there are no questions, we do need a motion to approve the resolution. Trustee Thompson.
I'm on the resolution, 23 days, both the urban legislators, legislators and governors to fix the broken system of funding critical services, of funding critical services.
There's a second. Trustee Owens has been moved by Trustee Thompson and second by Trustee Owens, moving to the hall vote. Trustee Booker, Trustee Woods, Trustee Owens, Trustee Johnson, Trustee Corrigan, Trustee Thompson, President Montgomery. Resolution is adopted unanimously. The next item, D, in our package, is review and recommendation of an amended conditional deterrent with cocaine LLC for use, sales, and public automobile garage in 4685 was planned to be rolled. This was on our plan submission last Monday, April 1st.
Sure, I'll review it, President Montgomery. The proposal is to actually amend the conditional use at the BP station.
Sure, I'll review it. President Montgomery, the proposal is to actually amend the conditional use at the BP station at forty six eighty five West Bradley Road. Mr. Mayor Asha, the applicant owner of the BP, he's recently taken it over and is looking for additional revenue sources along with the gas station and convenience store, which propose, which he's proposing to continue operating at the site. But he's looking to add in the eastern half of the building, an office for the used car sales. Turn the car wash into a public, what we call a public automobile garage, which would be utilized to service the used vehicles that he would have for sale. And then he would propose to park up to fifteen vehicles or on the east side of the building and fifteen, or eleven, excuse me, behind the building on the south side. The plant commission did review this proposed amendment. They did recommend unanimously to not approve the conditional use. Their concerns included issues of security over the vehicles, traffic and congestion throughout the existing site and the neighborhood. And talked about some of the, the other uses of the corridor with the automobile repairs and garages that are already servicing the area. And so this recommendation does come before you tonight. And this would be the final action, either approve or deny this amendment to the conditional use. Mr. Asha is here as well, obviously, couldn't raise any points if you feel that missed anything.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Dr. Asha. My address is one zero four eight, because I own this business over now, always have an address. A gas station. And I guess I spent all my cash, oh, like, to own the place. Now I'm struggling with this because there's not enough transparency. On spite of today, we're in a year. I got now about four thousand dollars, about four thousand dollars, electric bill on me. I can't pay. I'm just struggling with my thing with this business. That's why I'm thinking to add more business or to, to use the whole spot in this gas station. I got another five to spot in the back a little bit. I have to use it. I think to fix the car wash, I have to take one out with this economy. The car wash up to two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not able to take that, that car wash, again, add more revenue. The easiest way, if I can go through that car garage and car sale, because my background, I know about that, the cars. This is the easiest way so I can help my business. Either way, I mean, I have to sell that in one time. Not easy for me. Now, I try to think about restaurants, something like this, something like a gas station. The space for the building is not enough. I have to extend the building. This is the cost of that. Too much I have to sacrifice on that, you know? I'm so sorry, my language is imperfect or professional. Just, we have a situation with. And this is the first time I go through this process. I'm mad to see it, to walk through this process, but I have to look for me, but I cannot bring myself. I got seven kids, I have a business. I can ask just one room to pay the bill. And you know, now everything is all current, everything, when I'm. I have to find out something to help my family, to help my community, to help the world, the world.
Thank you so much, President. I got it. Thank you. Are there questions? We do have a couple of plan commission, many members here. Trustee Booker or trustee Johnson, any comments?
I guess first time we met, I just wanted to talk to you over the cell. You know, this would be my question, was the car wash, would you just answer that question, the investment that you need put into it? You know, when you say it's close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. A thousand, a hundred or two, three.
At the time you purchased the building, were you aware of the cost of the car wash and what needed to be cleared?
Yeah, that's why I go through this business with a little, like, list month, you know? Because the government is not working and there's some few things we have to fix it. I, I made this business, okay, with a little one, it's not full price. But now I would start working, okay, I know that main point, make this business is low because there's no target. When I work with a gas station and eight o'clock. The, um, there's no cars, that's pretty open for nothing. That's why I can use the morning time to sell that stuff or do something to cancel that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is one bubble. I guess when you walked into the business, you had a chance to look at the balance sheet and see how much revenue you were making. But you saw that the price, these creeps, the price in order to sell. So did you get any history before you actually brought it up?
I did some history. Thank the people that they were having. We check, I do, best I can do, we check for, we take a decision for where we can make one. But there's a few numbers that are not right. That's why we start, I'm starting now. But what's happening is happening, okay, that now I own the business. Now I have to find and do something to again bring myself. I cannot stay like this, that's to get my bill.
Any other questions?
The only comment I have is, I mean, we've spent considerable time discussing your issue. And I think the consensus is that particular business is not very fit for that location. And I do have a question regarding, because you know, I drive all the way when I'm involved by gas constitution. But if, you know, so and I, and I question why I would have, why I would need to do that. You know, is, is it that the rates are just a little bit too high if you go to reach my get for traffic? I don't know. But I certainly would go over there rather than driving without the fault also by getting this. So I mean, from a business model standpoint, that's something you may want to look at. Rates might be a little too high. That's why you're not getting the traffic flow that you should. Because I used to go there on the turn. It was just costly to buy gas over. But I would say that, and I've seen other processes, I've seen where the business models we tried to attain of a work. I just don't see it as a fit for that particular location. And I, you know, I can't speak for the entire plant mission. That was my perspective of all this just for.
I think the multiple uses that were recommended for that location, you already have the gas station, car wash, all those grow. You have a lot of customers coming in the shopping store. You got people coming from our region that you have. And you want to add the cars and that's the one lane street all the way around. And with that half block is residential. So that's a lot of activity in one location. You know, if you get in the heart of the day, multiple folks, it wouldn't be enough parking. So they end up on the street. They either end up on the street or they drive by because they can't get in if you have used cars throughout the entire, so. I, I don't know if there's any other questions or comments. I think the recommendation from the plant commission was to deny the amended conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
And so we do have an action tonight, either to uphold recommendation from the plant commission or to witness. So is there a motion to uphold recommendation from the plant? Trustee Thompson.
I move that we uphold recommendation from.
It's on there. Yeah. Request action.
Motion to. Motion to deny the amendment conditional use.
Is motion to deny the amended conditional use, is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Booker to deny the amended conditional use permit. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here. So it stands as denied. I would just recommend to look at some options to increase your flow at that location. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is review and recommendation on making conditional use permit for motor vehicles sales at at ninety fifty five or fifty first street, unit B, permanent. And may you speak to that?
Sure. And there are a couple of other similar items that follow on the agenda. Our conditional use permits and development agreements contain a one-year review provision that allows us to kind of see how those businesses or operations function during a time period before we look to make them permanent and then report those agreements or permits on the property's title so that it runs with the land. In this case, we have a property that, the intersection here of Freebrook and Fifty First Street. It is a used car sales operation in name only. It really is an office space where they are buying all the vehicles kind of online and then loading them and shipping them out to auction houses. We've not had any issues or complaints with the use. They're operating very much under the radar as intended. And we are recommending a venue permanent. The plant commission, uh, Wesley Gann has a recommendation as well.
Are there any questions? If not, we have a motion to make this permanent. Trustee Johnson.
I would have a motion to make this use permanent.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Johnson and second by trustee Booker to make the permit permanent at the motor vehicle sales section in at ninety fifty five or fifty first street, unit B. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here unanimously. The next item, again, as they said, is a conditional use permit that was issued to Fabric Lab. Uh, no, not conditional use development agreement with Fabric Lab at eighty seven fifty nine North Deerwood Drive, permanent.
Right, same concept. Fabric Lab took over the space of Modus Design. They're a printing company. And they occupied the space for the last year, no complaints or issues. And the plant commission, Gann has recommended making their agreement permanent as well.
Any questions? If not, we get a motion.
I would say we make the conditional agreement permanent.
It's development agreement.
It's in the development agreement.
Okay. Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Woods, second by trustee Owens to make the development agreement with Fabric Lab at eighty seven fifty nine of Deerwood Drive, permanent. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here. Thank you. The next item is review and recommendation on making the conditional use permit for warehousing at seventy six forty nine of Tetonia Avenue, permanent.
Same thing again. This is the old Sterling True Value Building on Tetonia that now belongs to Verona Properties. That's one of their warehousing and historic facilities. They have undertaken some remodeling to the building, the landscaping, fencing, all of that is completed for the permit. We've not had any issues there with their use. And the plant commission did recommend to make this, this conditional use permanent. And just for the board's information, you'll see conditional use of the development agreements, it depends on the zoning district as to what applies where. So sometimes it's a conditional use in our planned development districts, it's a development agreement. But here, it's a commercial and this is the conditional use and we'd be making it permanent with actions.
Trustee Orville.
Um, some of they were sort of initial grass by layers and they were having special, they're making this property. Have, have some of the talks about that, gotten them on board to understand, maybe to go talk about?
Yeah, they, they have, they have once contacted, they've been responsive. And so they are aware that we've been chasing them a little bit. And, you know, it's something that we hope they, they can do better on this year moving forward.
Other questions? If not, I'm going to get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to make the conditional use permit for warehousing at seventy six forty nine.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Booker to make the conditional use permit, seventy six forty nine of Tetonia Avenue, permanent. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here. That concludes our regular agenda. Our next item on the agenda is to resource recess and close session pursuant to a statute stat nineteen point eight five one chief for the bottom reasons, C, to consider appointment, promotion, compensation or warrants evaluation that of any public employee over government to body have a jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to discuss the annual warrants evaluation of those managers. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Woods, second by trustee Thompson to go into closed session, all those in favor? Motion, uh, any? Motion here. So please just turn on. And if anyone needs to take a break before.
So just go in my office, is the door closed? I haven't reviewed anything yet, so if there's anything.